Good evening, everyone. We're called to order this February 20th. The Perry Municipal Authority Meeting. Before we take parole, let's have our word of prayer.
Pleasure, Pastor. Father, this evening as this council gathers together, we ask that you bless them with the wisdom and the discernment to make the decisions that are best for those here in the community of Perry. Dear Lord, we thank you for this community that we live in and that you've given us. Dear Lord, we thank you for this government that you have blessed and bestowed upon us. Dear Lord, may all that we do glorify you, and it's in Christ name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. First item on our agenda, folks, is to call parole.
Stroller?
Here.
Dow?
Here.
Moxley?
Here.
Norman?
Here.
Nation?
Here.
Wade?
Warner?
Attorney.
Harry?
Johnson?
Here.
We're going to take on a consent agenda now. Is there anything that you'd like to see removed from the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Roll call please.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
We asked it all self-employed.
I tried to turn it off and just took a photograph. That's going to be interesting. Item four is comments from those assembled. Anyone want to make comments at this time, please? Seeing none, next item is a proclamation, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. Anyone here need to make anything on item five? Seeing none. Presentation is in order from Jennifer Rogers to update us on the municipal power authorities activities.
I would have been here earlier, but I got stuck at the train. That's a long train. It was like, oh my gosh, is it ever going to end?
You're lucky there wasn't another one following.
There was another one on the other side, and I was like, oh no, let me just check my two trains. So, yeah, I made it through. I'm just going to give you guys a brief update on some activities that we have going on. We do have an area meeting on March 13th in Edmund, and that's a chance for any of you that want to come and hear our general manager and our engineering group and our member services group give you an update about power supply and maybe some issues that we might have going on at OMPA. We are going to be attending, there's an Oklahoma Municipal League Day that's going to be at the Capitol, and it's on March 16th. So OMPA, we will have a booth there for legislators or representatives that want to come by and visit us. There will be an elected officials conference for mayors or city council members that would like to attend, and it's during our public power conference, and it's going to be on April the 28th, and that's a Monday. Basically, it's a loaded, packed schedule, and it kind of gives, it's a public power 101 per se. It kind of teaches council or mayors or anybody who may not know the benefits of what public power can do for your system and what benefits it has on your town as being a public power utility. So that's going to be a packed agenda, and that's just for only strictly elected officials. So, you can't go. You can't go, I know. We do have a couple of other programs that we are working on. We still have our D program, which is our demand and energy efficiency program. That's for your commercial and industrial customers, and as long as they're making energy efficiency improvements that will lower their peak demand in the summer, we will give them a rebate to do so. We also are currently teaming up with MISO and the Grand River Dam Authority to work on a lineman recruitment DVD. A lot of our cities are having trouble keeping linemen or getting linemen, so we are getting this DVD done to give to high schools. So that way, maybe people, like some boys that might be graduating or girls, we do have women linemen, that want to stay close to home, you know, they might consider a job in their own community, their hometown. So, that will hopefully be available soon. We are in the final stages of editing that right now. We have an energy services committee, subcommittee, that is working on a joint billing project. This is obviously going to be an optional program for any of our member cities that want to participate, but it is going to be billing software and meters. So if you guys need to upgrade your billing system sometime in the future, if you need to redo your meters, upgrade any of your meters, it will be optional, and there'll be multiple vendors for you to choose from. So, if that's something you want to look at in the future, I know some people have just done it, so probably won't be upgrading for sometime soon, but if that is something you want to look at, we are doing a joint project so our members can get a more cheaper rate if they want to. And the way I understand it, the meters are going to be, if you don't want to replace all your meters at once, you don't have to. You can do them on a step-by-step across-town basis, so you don't have to do all the meters at one time. Let's see, what else do I have? Oh, power supply-wise, we just held our groundbreaking on the Charles D. Lamb Energy Center. That's going to be our new natural gas power plant in Ponca City. The mayor was there, Mary was there, Dixie, you were there. Took pictures, did you guys get my picture of this, didn't you? Okay, good, good deal. It's going to be 103 megawatts, and it's going to be natural gas. We do have the room for growth to add on to that power plant if we do need it in the future. We hope that it's going to be operational by April of 2015, so construction is already started, so we're good to go on that. And that's all I have. Pretty short and simple, but a lot of stuff. Do you guys have any questions?
I just want to say, if you get a chance to go up on Highway 11 east from Highway 35, easy to find the power plant location, it's just east of Blackwell. And it's right out there in the big middle of, it looks like a cornfield, and they've started earthwork on that.
Yeah.
Pretty cool.
It's really a great location because there's a power line and it's-
Transmission line.
Transmission line that's close by there, there's a gas line that goes by there. Ponca City extended the water out there, so it really is an ideally located facility, site, yeah, so that, you know, there's some really good things happening there.
Oh, and one more thing. It's not even on my notes, but I just remembered it because I was on something for it. We do have, the APPA is the American Public Power Association. They're holding their engineering and operations conference in Oklahoma City this year, which is a huge honor. A lot of people don't understand that, but APPA normally, like the conference I just went to that they hosted was in Portland. So they pick like big cities across the United States, so for Oklahoma City to get kind of in the mix is huge. But they have a nationwide linemen's rodeo, and that is going to be in Edmund, since Edmund is a large municipal utility, and they've actually participated in the national rodeo before, so Edmund got chosen. So, a lot of the guys from our surrounding cities are helping out as being judges or might even compete in the rodeo. So if you get a chance, it's on a weekend, and it'll be at Mitch Park in Edmund. If you get a chance, I mean, there's going to be like 500 competitors, I mean, it's huge. So if you guys get a chance, it's going to be a big deal, because they're already putting the polls up, and it looks insane at that park, but people are like, what are they doing? Yeah, it looks crazy. So, when you see like 200 polls side by side, and you're like, there's no lines on them. So, that'll be a big deal for the state. So if we can start getting those conferences to come into Oklahoma, that'll be a lot of revenue. So, that's one thing that will be going on. So, do you guys have any questions? No?
Questions?
No.
Thank you.
No? All right, thank you.
Appreciate you coming by.
No problem.
Any new business here? The authority.
Big motion to adjourn.
Second. May the motion be seconded.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Norman?
Nation?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
It is 10:24?
Six.
Six twenty-four. Why did I say ten? Where is my brain? Six twenty-four, February 20th, 2014. The regular meeting of the city council, City of Perry is called to order. Roll call please.
Stroller?
Here.
Dow?
Here.
Moxley?
Here.
Norman?
Here.
Nation?
Here.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Who?
Johnson.
Johnson, oh yeah, that's me. Yes, I'm here.
I'm rolling out.
We're doing good tonight.
I've said that too many times.
Let's consider the consent agenda. There's any items on the consent agenda you'd like to see removed?
I'd like to take off D2.
D2?
Uh huh.
Thank you. Any others? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda minus D2. Sit.
Motion seconded.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Paul?
What are they doing at time?
Who?
Johnson.
Oh.
I don't know, something's wrong with me, man.
Item D2. Questions?
Betty? Yes, I noticed on here they have from the 16th to the 28th that the Parks Department was reading meters. Do we not have any meter readers anymore?
We have a person that is part-time at Parks, and they read meters when the meter readers are actually out in the field reading meters. So, it's a combination position. Now, their responsibility, it's Amber is who it is, and their responsibilities include both working for Brenda and meter reading. They're the third meter reader.
She's doing an excellent job.
Thank you, Natasha.
By the way.
Any other questions or comments?
And she's relatively new, so there was some, you know, additional time that Brenda spent with her, you know, reading, you know, going along with her and reading and getting her acclimated to the route. So, Dylan knows how to read meters, you know, there's times when he helps out too. So, obviously, reading meters is a high priority for us, and when it's time to read meters, we read meters. And there are times when we take people who are, you know, that know how to do that. Sometimes we have to use, you know, take them from departments and fill in, so. And, you know, and also, you know, sometimes when it's weather, when it's bad weather, it slows them down a lot. And so, this week, actually, they were finishing up reading meters this week, and the weather was great, so, you know, that makes a huge difference in them getting, you know, around the city, so.
Betty, anything?
No.
Would I make a motion prior to D2?
I'll make a motion when you approve it.
Second. There's Lynn.
I heard it.
Stroller?
Yes.
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Comments from those assembled? Would anyone like to make some comments before the council? Any proclamations, commendations, reports, or inquiries by the governing body?
Where are we at on the traffic lights for season three?
Materials have been ordered, and we have to do some, a little bit of work in advance before they come in and do the installations. You know, they need to give us a little advance warning so that we should, the material should be in most any time, because there is a little bit of a lead time in ordering materials like that, so. But I'll find out, I'll get a schedule for you, a little more definite information. I was just thinking the same thing today. When are we going to get that signal in?
I want to comment, all the city workers, but especially the last couple of days, we've had our street crew working on a sidewalk project in front of a Wheat Heart Nutrition Center, building a new ramp and extending sidewalk all the way down to Fourth Street?
Sixth.
Sixth Street? Sixth Street. From the nutrition center east to Sixth Street. And that's going to make a lot safer for the people getting in and out of that facility, so. They've done a great job, and I want to commend them. Any others? Item six is the city manager's report.
Thank you. City of Perry received notification from the Oklahoma Historical Society that the 2014 State Historical Preservation Officer Citation of Merit, where we presented to Main Street and to the City of Perry, to the Cherokee Strip Museum, and to other groups that all pitched in and helped with the state preservation conference that was held last summer in Perry. So that's a nice honor, recognizing all the effort that went into hosting that conference here in Perry, because it was a big undertaking, and we did quite well, I thought, in-
They said it was the best one they've ever had.
Yeah, best ever. Best ever.
They're having it in Norman this year, and Juan Francis, he's really going to have to work hard to beat us, so.
I think that's cool.
Jennifer already talked about the groundbreaking. It's one of the couple of things that I thought, you know, I'd go ahead and add on that. OMPA has partial ownership in various power plants around, and so this will be the very first that will be solely owned and operated by OMPA, so that's a very big step for OMPA to take, to be more self-sufficient in the energy industry. So, it's, it'll be a huge undertaking, but it also has a lot of benefits to it, too, Today, we closed on the land that was purchased by White Iron out in the industrial park. Five acres were purchased by them, and so they'll, we'll be starting on Monday and starting to install the utilities to serve the two tracks, two five-acre tracks there, that's south of R and N Concrete on the south side of the road. So, you'll see some activity there soon, and I think White Iron is anxious to get started. They'd like to get up and going sometime in March, so we're pretty excited about that. Dixie Johnson, our very own Dixie Johnson, has been accepted into Class Three of the OML's Citizen Academy for Leadership Training, and it's a year-long program that she's committed to attending the sessions. And so, a year from now, at the OML Day at the Capitol, they'll have the graduation for that class, and so that's a nice honor for Dixie, and I know she'll represent City of Perry very well.
That's cool.
Tomorrow is the Water Summit, Environmental and Water Summit, and Matt Mears, Public Works Director, and Mayor Johnson will be attending that, and the new Secretary of Energy Environment will be there and giving some updates, and you'll be hearing about programs from OWRB and ODEQ, and so you might want to drink your coffee really strong tomorrow before you go.
I've been to government and talked to people.
Yes, yes. So, well, we don't have a water tower at the elementary school anymore. You know, when you get one of those calls and you think it's too good to be true, and usually it is too good to be true, but this time it turned out to be really good, because Mr. Kozinski called and wanted to take down our water tower for nothing, it's like, oh yeah, right. So, he was pretty persistent, and so got Bryce involved, we got, you know, we told him what we needed as far as insurance and contracts and all of that, and he was still very willing to do it. And so, you know, they got here on Friday, on the 7th, and, you know, less than a week, they were out of here. And so, it was pretty amazing. It was Mr. Kozinski, his dad, and another worker. It was a three-man crew that took that down and cut it up into pieces, it was loaded onto trucks and hauled away to the scales in Tulsa, I guess. So, anyway, pretty amazing, and thanks to Tyson, we have a video that he's going to show. It'll take him a little bit to get it queued up, but he's got a video that I think is going to be interesting for everybody to see.
Good job, Tyson.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And that's the end of my report. Yeah. Opened any questions? I have.
How do you top that?
I know.
Well, guys.
Okay, it's up to you to stop that, Steve.
Man, don't even know what to say at that point. I guess we just move on. We don't want to talk about fall. Oh, right?
No, no falling.
How about the rise? Let's talk about the rise.
The rise, the raise, or anything.
You move it to me.
Yes, sir, I did.
Is it my turn? I'm sorry.
My name's Ron Sird Record.
I think we were jumping around here.
Yeah.
My goodness. No. Yeah, that's a little hard to follow. Good job, Tyson. That was interesting to watch. You guys have your reports in your hands. Honestly, nothing really that exciting going on in here. Matter of fact, I thought this evening I might take just a second to, you know, at least stop and thank our department heads this evening for their conscientious observance of the budget this year. Even our police and our fire departments, which are my two favorite departments whenever it comes to budget time, are doing a very good job related to the budget. So as you look in there this evening, and really, that's the only reason I picked on them was because they're the two that are sitting in here. Had nothing personally to do with what they're doing, but, no, you know, guys, one thing that I can say, that I think doesn't get said enough around the council today is, you know, we're blessed with very good department heads around here, and they're usually very conscientious about what goes on in their departments, what they do, where they can raise a little extra money. You know, I mean, just today, we had a little scrap iron sale that came in, you know, but we needed to pick up a generator in the electric department and, you know, found a little extra copper, a little extra scrap iron that was sitting around, and we said, hey, if I go sell this, you know, we have enough of that back to my budget. You know, that's what these department heads do day in and day out, and it's not just in electric, you know. It happens in all the departments. Every one of them are conscientious about what's going on in their department, where they're spending money, how they're spending money, and what they're going to do with it. And so, that's really nice, you know. It's not always just, I need, I need, I need, coming from them. I know whenever we talk about budgets, whenever we do the budget time, that's all you guys hear from them is, well, I need this, and I need that, and I need the other, and it's more and more and more all the time. Day in and day out, that's not what gets on in City Hall, and that's not what department heads do. And so, you know, I think they need to be commended for that. They do a good job, they work hard, and they stay within their budgets, you know. Right now, if you guys want to look at that, your budget versus actual, you know, 58%, 59% is really where we should be. You're going to see one department that's even close to that number. You know, everybody else is 3%, 4%, 5% underneath where they should be budgeted expenses so far through the year. That's good news. That's what we want to hear, and that's what we want to have. You know, they spend it when they need it, but if they don't have to have it, they're not out just spending it, you know, they're controlling their personnel budgets, you know, they're watching the time, because the biggest portion of anything that's in any of these budgets is personnel. You know, we are a service industry. If we don't have the people to do the services, then we don't really need any budget in there to do anything else, because without the people there to do it, without the people there to represent the city and do what they do, you know, we really don't, we don't have other expenses. You know, we spend money on wholesale electric, you know, we spend money on debt service, but outside of those two things, personnel is what makes up the majority of what we do. So, you know, I think we need to, every once in a while, stop and thank them for the work that they've done and for what they do there. As I said, you know, we don't have very many, our sales tax collections continue to be good. You know, we had another strong month on sales tax collections, which are good. Hotel motel tax was down a little bit, Betty, I know you'd like to know that, for the month of, for the collections this month, you know, and I honestly don't have a full explanation for that at the moment. We're working on it, and a couple of things that we're looking into a little further, and matter of fact, Mary and I have talked, probably hotel motel tax audits on a couple are going to start back up, if not the first part of March, by the end of March.
I think a lot of the pipeline people are moving on through, too.
So, well, you know, I'll tell you what, every once in a while, you know, whenever I have to stay, you know, if I'm in the city area or whatever, usually I'll come on up and spend the night or do something, you know, either spend tonight or spend the night before. Lately, I've been doing that, and both the hotels that I stay at, both of them have been pretty much full, you know, I mean, every time that I've tried to get away from them, so, you know, that's good news. We are seeing that in a couple of the reports. It's a couple of the other reports that we'll probably be looking a little further into over the next month. Just for safeguard of the city, you know, I mean, we have it out there, and we just need to follow up and make sure that we're collecting all of those revenues that are due us. You know, we have, we have some projects that we've committed to that are coming out of that Economic Development Fund, so we want to make sure that we get all the revenues due us, so that we can, you know, do those projects and do more projects out of it. I think today, you mentioned, Mary mentioned White Iron and mentioned the closing, you know, of that situation. Another piece that our economic development, another thing that our economic development has done for us, you know, we used the hotel motel tax money originally to purchase that piece of land, and now if you go out there and you go down the list, you can go see the road, you can see businesses that are, that's already built there, you can look at the different pieces that are out there. And it's going to be a success, because we, you all, as the council and the board, took- all, as the council, as the board, took, had a little forethought, went out and said, "Hey, let's do this." At the time, I think there were a bunch of people that said, "You guys are crazier than a bunch of nuts," you know? What are you buying a piece of property out here for? But the vision and the dream, and that's, that's what we have to do, you know, as this council, as this board, you know, there are more projects coming, more things that we need to do, we just need to make sure that we have the foresight and the vision to see those things and to get them done, because it is, it's a success, it's good for Perry, overall, it's gonna be good for our city's economy, and that's what we want to have. We want more of that day in and day out, so, I think, you know, good things go. Jumping on to the PMA, you'll see all of our revenues and expenses are really within line, you know, we, we have not transferred all of the money out of PMA that we've budgeted to transfer out this year, matter of fact, that's why we have a little excess income sitting there, but as in every time, if we don't need to transfer it out to the general fund to cover operations, I'm not, we're not gonna make that transfer, we're not gonna transfer more money than what we have to. So, that being said, things are, things are looking good there, and it's positive. Coming up, and I know you guys hate to hear this piece, but budgets are right around the corner, you know, matter of fact, we usually project off of February numbers whenever we get ready to adopt budgets, so, you know, next month, when we finish February, granted we're almost through February today, but eight more days, when we finish this month, you know, those will probably be the numbers that we start projecting 2015's budget on. I know it sounds bad that we're halfway through the next decade, whenever we start talking 2015, but we're there, and so, we've got, we've got that piece coming up, and we'll be working on that here shortly, so. If you guys have thoughts, if you have visions, if you have things that you want to make sure that we consider, here's your, here's your 30-day notice to kind of start getting those around and get us some checklist, because we'll be getting with the department heads, we'll be doing those things, but this is, this is a short list of things that we need to get done, so. With that, I don't really have any other comments, I will leave it to you guys for questions.
Any questions? Seeing them, the motion? No? Alright. Item eight. Counsel, we are, may I ask, do you consider approval of the FY 2014 REIT contract and authorize the acting mayor to execute that contract? The city applied for a $100,000 economic, a rural economic action plan grant for the north, from the Northern Oklahoma Development Authority last fall. I'd slow down, I'd probably read. The competition for these grants is significant, but the city was awarded $50,000 to be used for construction of Charles Hall Drive, the accessway to Perry Commercial Park, coming off, that's coming off the FER and ODOT's I-2, I-35 southbound entrance round, so. Are there any questions concerning that request?
Is this normal to ask for like $100,000 and expect less?
Yes.
Okay. I was just curious. You always ask for more?
We sure would like to have $100,000.
Well, you try not to play that game, but I really did feel like we, we might get $100,000. I mean, I, you know, there's always a chance, you know, because this was a project, or this was a grant that we requested funds for previously for the same use, and got zero. And so, you know, but I was kind of optimistic that we might get the full hundred, but I know they try to make the money go as far as they can and try to award, you know, some to...
Spread it out a little.
To spread it out a little bit, but, you know...
It's competitive, and the marks that we have against us is we have too much money and we're too big. You know, cities over 7,500 don't get it, and so, it, you know, the, the thinking is it's for the ones that are smaller and don't have the resources, so, it's very good that we got this.
The fact that it's shovel-ready, we have plans and specs all ready to go, you know, we could go to bid in 30 days if we needed to, you know, if we were, you know, ready to do that, so, that made a big difference, I think, in terms. Plus, we didn't get one last, the last round, the last cycle, we didn't get a grant, and that gives you a few points too, so.
Yeah, in that regard, we're looking at maybe a, a turning dirt out there, and real soon. Like she said, I think that's really important for our persons that have expressed interest in locating in the commercial park, so. We start really moving dirt, I think that interest will jump.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the REIT contract and authorize our acting mayor to execute it.
Second.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Item nine. Declare...
Kiosera.
Kiosera. I knew I missed that. Declare Kiosera, the Kiosera, copier City Hall surplus equipment and no longer useful for public purpose, and direct the city manager to dispose of in accordance with the purchasing manual.
Removed.
Second.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Any new business that you guys want to bring up that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, and I believe we'll, we need to reconvene and direct to the executive session for the purpose of confidential communication between the governing body and its attorney concerning potential claim or legal action involving the downtown streets gate project, since the governing body finds, with advice of its attorney, that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim and/or legal action in the public interest.
Removed.
Second.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to approve D2. Second.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yeah.
Moxley?
Yeah.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. The action, we are, in item 13, call for action to be taken, we're not taking any action this time, we're just furthering our discussion at the next meeting. So, item 14?
Motion to adjourn.
Roll call.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for your discussion, it was great.